Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission of the City of Moreno Valley. I now call this meeting to order on October 14th at 7:02 PM. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Kobian?
Present.
Commissioner Bergers?
Here.
Commissioner Sims?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Dejeanay?
Here.
Chairperson Korzek?
Present. The Pledge of Allegiance will now be led by Commissioner Sims. ...to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We're now going to move to the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion and a second, please?
I move.
Commissioner Bergers moves and a second?
Second.
And Commissioner Kobian, the seconds. May we have the vote, please? It's approved five to zero. Next, we're going to have public comments procedure. Any person wishing to address the commission on any matter, either under the public comments section to the agenda, or scheduled items, or public hearings, must fill out a request to speak form available at the door. Alternatively, a request to speak may be made in person at the time they submit a request to receive the Zoom meeting ID number. So we are doing this by Zoom tonight also. The completed form must be submitted by the secretary prior to the agenda item being called by the chairperson. In speaking to the commission, members of the public are limited to three minutes per person, except for the applicant for entitlement. The commission can't establish an overall time limit for comments on a particular agenda item. Members of the public must direct their questions to the chairperson of the commission and not to other members of the commission, the applicant, the staff, or the audience. The next item is public comments on any item not on the agenda. Are there any speakers?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the commission requests that an item be removed for separate action. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after the public hearing items. Questions or comments from the public on a consent calendar matter are limited to three minutes per individual and must pertain to the subject under consideration. Do we have any public comments?
No, Madam Chair.
All right. So may we have a motion or a discussion about the minutes on the consent calendar? Do we want to go for a blanket vote? If so, please someone make a motion, please?
Motion?
Motion to?
To vote?
On the consent?
Oh, to vote on the consensus, sorry.
Okay, thank you. May we have a second, please? We did the minutes. Well, the minutes are part of the consent calendar. Do you have a pro- are there any issues on the minutes? Oh, okay. All right, I make the second, please. I'll make the second. So may we please have the vote? This, we're voting on the minutes. Okay, we approve that, five to zero. The next item on the agenda is non-public hearing items. At this time, we have no items. And now we're going into the public hearing items. The next item is item number one, a plot plan, PEN 20-0077, for a new 7,982 square-foot two-story building, a conditional use permit for the operation of a 4,385-square-foot cannabis cultivation business, a 1,321-square-foot cannabis distribution business, and a 2,276-square-foot cannabis manufacturing business on a 13,650-square-foot vacant unimproved lot. May we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Commission. Sean Kelleher, planning official. The project before you this evening? I'll give them a moment to bring the presentation up. The project before you this evening is a master plot plan for the construction of a two-story commercial building and three conditional use permits for the operation of three commercial cannabis uses, including cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution. Please note, this conditional use permit application before the commission tonight is for three separate cannabis business, cannabis businesses. This is not a microbusiness that we're considering this evening, or that is being considered this evening. The project site is located on the south side of Cottonwood Avenue, west of Edgemont Street, within the Business Park District. The proposed commercial cannabis businesses are a conditionally permitted use within this district. The applicant is proposing to construct a two-story, 7,982-square-foot multi-tenant building on one, on 13,000, on a 13,650-square-foot vacant lot. The interior of the building will be broken up into three business suites to house the three different cannabis businesses. This includes a 4,385-square-foot cultivation business, a 2,276-square-foot manufacturing business, and a 1,321-square-foot distribution business. As noted on the site plan, the applicant has proposed a total of 11 parking spaces for the proposed operations of this, of this facility. The municipal code would traditionally require 15 parking spaces for a building of this size. The applicant, however, has submitted justification as part of a parking analysis that was included in the commission's agenda packet. This, this analysis identifies that the three businesses will be operated by a singular entity, and the employees will typically perform multiple duties across all three businesses, and that the operator of the business will also offer incentives for the use of mass transit or carpooling to employees. Finally, it should be noted that none of the proposed business operations related to these uses rely on direct customer interactions. The applicant has proposed site improvements to this, to the site, which include but are not limited to new landscaping, a six-foot decorative block wall along the south and east sides of the property, along the property lines, or, yeah, property lines. Since the applicant, since the project was originally submitted, the applicant and staff have worked to, worked together to bring forward a building that is contemporary and attractive. The multi-tenant building before you incorporates complementary materials and colors and patterns, including smooth stucco, decorative concrete, masonry unit block, and aluminum paneling. The proposed project, as designed and conditioned, complies with the city standards of the municipal code. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve resolution numbers 2021-36 through 39, certifying that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and approve planning case numbers PEN 20-077, PEN 19-0096, PEN 19-0098, and PEN 19-0099, subject to the conditions of approval in your packet this evening. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for any questions, and the applicant is also available for questions as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to do this a little different at the beginning tonight. We have some general topics. We're going to ask all the questions at once from the commissioners, so we won't be going through the same thing over and over again. I'd like to start off with some questions about the business itself. Why is that not considered a microbusiness if there are three businesses and one person's going to be overseeing? And I guess, what is the difference between that and a microbusiness?
So the difference between the microbusiness and the business model that they are proposing is ultimately it is three different business entities. So while it does have the same group, group or members, the organizations are each independent from a legal standpoint. So they have a business that is associated specifically with distribution, they have a business license that is specifically for manufacturing, and a business license specifically for cultivation. They, the businesses all operate independently. So they're legally separate in that regard.
Even though they talk about using the same employees rolling over into the different areas?
They, they can do that, yeah. An individual can be employed by multiple entities. It just happens in this case. They would be employed by, you know, three different corporations out of the same building.
Okay. I have some real questions about these three businesses. What, what if one doesn't work out and they have an empty space? Do you know what I mean? When we're looking at, for example, the parking, we're looking at reducing the parking. Perhaps it works fine for this entity, but we know down the road, if this business should fail and that building has to have other people go in, suddenly there's not enough parking for those other three businesses as required. This exception was being made for this kind of thing. What happens in that case to the fact that I'm going, let's say my business, and I hope it doesn't, if we choose to move it forward, but what happens if, you know, this business goes out and I've got to put in, the tenant, the landlord has to put a new tenant in, and you've got three different businesses that have more employees and they really needed the 15 spaces?
So if that were to occur in the future, there's two different things that we would ultimately look at. One would be the business operations of the new business coming in. This we already do with existing shopping centers. Shopping centers that were developed 20 years ago may not meet our current development standards. So what we'll end up doing is a parking analysis to confirm that the parking works for this new use coming into the center, and we'll look at different alternatives for that use to make sure that the hours of operation work, or maybe there are additional site improvements that they ultimately need to do at that time to, to take over that suite.
Okay. What size trucks are we talking? I just, can I ask, or did you want something directly related to that, Jeff?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Can I ask, it's just, it's kind of a, so it, under the scenario, there's three separate CUPs for three separate specific cannabis businesses.
Yes, sir.
So if, for instance, if the cultivation, it just, we're not doing well, so the cultivation, the second story of this building says, that corporation says, we're out. In theory, the CUP, if, what, what happens to the entitlement of the CUP? Does that, does that remain? Or if, if a new use goes in, does the CUP get, get, the use, if this gets approved today, let's say for the cultivation CUP?
The conditional use permit ultimately runs with the land and would still be valid. However, for somebody to act upon that CUP, they would still need, they would still need to obtain a cannabis license through the city. So they would need to work through.
The, the owner, the owner could, if they, if the owner of the building, if that, if that CUP runs with that specific type of business at that specific location, they could market the building to another potential cultivator to take over that space, as provided they got the appropriate license, state licensing.
Well, they would also have to get the appropriate city license as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bergers?
So what I hear is if one of the businesses fail, we cannot put a supermarket, a laundromat, or 7-Eleven in that space. Yes or no? Because it's only designed for cannabis.
No, that's not, no. It could be any, it could be any other use that's permitted within the Business Park District, as long as it meets the, as long as the applicant can demonstrate that they're meeting the development requirements for that suite.
So I can put a laundromat in that, in that space without having me actually get a license either, right? I don't need a license to put a laundromat in that space.
A laundromat would not actually be a permitted use within, so we're still, we're talking about land use at this point, and what the permitted uses are within the district.
So it has to be cannabis-related?
No, sir.
No?
It doesn't need to be cannabis-related, but it does need to be consistent with our permitted uses table for Business Park.
So if I, so essentially what could happen is, so he goes, so he goes, the applicant goes through all the process, builds the building, gets the CUPs, activates, 10 years, the pot goes out of, that's not the, the, the thing de jour, and it goes to something else, and they, they say, well, the better and higher use of this property is now something different that wouldn't require a CUP. They could go ahead and do the entitlement process for that, as long as it's consistent with this underlying land use.
We, as long as we're not creating any new impacts associated with parking or other, or other things.
They'd have to go through.
They would have to go through a process of some sort, whatever that is related to their permit.
And then to take that one step further, it goes to a different use. Cannabis fails, another business comes and gets all the appropriate licenses, and operates for 10 years, and then, but that CUP is still kind of sitting there in the background for the cannabis. Could they go back to the cannabis operation with that, with the CUP that runs with this property?
But for that, I would ask Steve if he could weigh in a little bit more on that one.
If, if, if the owner wants to bring in a different type of use and we issue a permit, so any sort of land use permit for it, automatically that CUP goes away. It supersedes whatever's there running with the land.
It would be a significant decision to, after you go through all this process to get a CUP, to let it go. So, yeah, to convert it to another approved land use.
Yes, if it requires a discretionary entitlement, that has to come through the Planning Commission and City Council.
Anyone else? I, I'm still concerned about the parking. I looked at the size of those spaces. You can barely open your car door if you really put today's cars in those spaces. It's really, really tight.
Those parking spaces, the drive aisles, everything is designed to meet our minimum standards.
Yeah. And if you look, though, you know, I, I know there are minimum standards, and we say there aren't a lot of trucks on the road, but I drive every day and I'm sandwiched between trucks. But I look at the, the people in Moreno Valley and some of the vehicles, and we got a lot of big trucks. I mean, big pickup trucks, big vans, we have a lot of families here. I'm not saying these would be the people to frequent this, but I'm saying that myself, I'm looking at this, and the little car that's in there, I, I don't know what model that is, but I don't like to park next to something that I am so close that the door's going to hit the next car. And those spaces look like they're made for Mini Coopers. That's probably the minimum.
The parking spaces are nine foot wide. Traditionally, a car is about six to seven.
And then the door opens. Okay. I, I really have difficulty with the parking.
Our, our parking space sizes are the same as pretty much every other jurisdiction in Southern California.
Maybe, maybe it just feels really, really tight because the building is situated so tight on the land. It, it feels claustrophobic, and if you go out and look at the land and you see the plot, it's really tight. The next question, and I know they're on here, but you do have the charging stations on here, right? For the electric vehicles? Are they on the plan? I, I couldn't find them.
It's not identified on the plan. It's a pre-wiring that they would ultimately have to do as part of the new building. They don't have to install electrical vehicle charging at this time. They just have to pre-wire under current California Building Code.
Do you know where the pre-wiring would be going?
We did.
I mean, where would they, where would they put these charging stations? Because it's, it's going to become an eventuality. I, I'm just asking. It's like, I like a little bit of the vision on it.
At this point, at this level of detail, we don't traditionally ask for that specific information. We would ask for that, we will ask for that when they go through the building plan check process.
Well, you don't have a lot of land here to put these things. It's what, I, it's the size of the lot that is making me claustrophobic just looking at it. So I'm just wondering, if you're going to put charging stations, where are you going to put them on this plot? I just have a little bit, I'm always looking ahead, and I know that this is really something that is happening. I just have no idea. And I'm also seeing, in our community, a lot more people using the charging stations. I'm blown away by some of the new developments and places where the cars are actually getting charged. It's kind of, it's kind of a good thing, and I think it's going to continue to grow. But no wonder is I couldn't find it on here, because they're not on here. Okay.
Not identified at this time.
All right. Anyone else on parking questions?
No, I just wanted to ask, Sean, did you say that the nine foot wide is a standard dimension that we've seen in all the other?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's no difference?
That is our minimum requirement for the parking stalls to be nine foot wide, but then it also requires the striping that actually adds another approximately one foot with the, with the U shape that it, you know, that's created by the stall, by the striping.
And, and my understanding is, well, it's not, it's not a business where we're, we're looking at individuals coming to patronize the place.
Correct. None of, none of these businesses are open to the public.
Okay, so this is not where the individual will come to park there and have to get on, patronize the place and get on where, these would be employees parked there?
Correct.
Do you know what size trucks they're anticipating that would be used? Because I see there are truck doors. Do you know anything about the trucks that would be used?
For that, I will need to have the applicant address that at that time.
Okay. All right, we'll put that on the list. Anyone else? All right. Commissioner Bergers, would you like to give us another topic?
Why so big of a building, two stories? Why two, why two stories that high? What is the second floor for?
So the second floor is the floor for their cultivation use. The first, the bottom floor has two suites in it, one for their manufacturing, one for their distribution. So they're, they are, they're being economical with the use of their space.
So as they go higher, they block more of the view of the neighborhood? That's what I see. When you pull a tall building there, you block people's view. They've been living there for many, many years, so.
There is no height limit within this district.
Okay. Do you have a listing of some of the projects we've approved?
There've been a total of three projects approved within the Edgemont area, which is generally defined by Old 215 Frontage Road, Eucalyptus, Day Street, and Alessandro. There've been three projects over the past three years that have been approved. Two of them have been located north of Cottonwood. Those were both residential, multifamily projects. One was for 18 units, the other was for 51. The third project was actually the reuse of an existing building for a cannabis dispensary off of Alessandro Boulevard.
And those residential, do you remember the heights, how many stories?
So the, the most recent one that was approved, the first one that was approved by the Planning Commission, which was 18 units, was single-story structures. The second one that was approved by the Planning Commission more recently included three-story structures. Traditionally, a three-story apartment structure is going to range somewhere between 35 and 40 feet tall.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bergers?
The one on Alessandro that I remember that I was able to approve or support was a old automobile place, I believe it was.
Yes, sir.
That's what it was. So that was single-story, and that was pretty low. Because I remember, I say that every time I go by there, when I'm heading towards Day Street, or the Old 215. Can't miss it. So I remember that for sure. So I'll wait for other topics. I'm just a little concerned right now.
Okay. Anyone else have a topic? I have another one, if nobody else does.
Yeah, my curiosity, and I'm not sure. I remember the general plan update, and I don't remember all the changes specifically to the, the land usage. What, I, I see in that area, it is Business Park. Was that a recent change? Because everything else is residential?
No, sir. The Business Park zoning designation has been there that predates any other general plan amendments that the city adopted in this area.
Okay, so it's been, been Business Park for some time?
Business Park, I can say back to 2006. I would bet earlier than, I would assume earlier than that.
Okay. Yeah, I think so as well.
Well, I'd like to bring up the question of water. That area has notoriously had many, many water issues over the years. Two things. When you guys got the CDBG grant, I don't know the year of it, but you were able to put sewers in there. Was there knowledge at that time that an applicant would, that didn't have, well, this, how can I put this? This, this is federal money, and I've dealt with CDPG grants in museums that I've run before. This money was taken to do the sewers. Was there knowledge at that time that a cannabis growing, something, or any kind of cannabis would be going in there at the time the money was accepted from the government to put those sewers in? You might not have been here, Sean, I don't know. I know it goes way back, but I have a concern on this because cannabis is not federally recognized right now, and I have a fear, and I don't know if it could happen, but I want to, I just want to just say it. If, if we're going to put something in there that's not federally recognized and we receive funding knowing that this was a potential, can the government ask for their, some of that money back? Because you can't, I know with CDBG, they're, they're really, really strict on what you can use it for.
For that, I'm going to defer to the city attorney.
Okay. He probably is.
Thank you. Yeah, I know that we got a letter to that effect. I believe one of the churches submitted a letter along those lines. And really, there's no telling what the government, the federal government's going to do. I know the federal government has not rescinded grants, certain grants, because there's, some of that money may have been used to support in some way, some businesses that included, you know, cannabis. So I cannot guarantee that that would not happen. But in California, in Colorado, and other states, we haven't seen any evidence that the federal government has been aggressive in doing something like this. But you're correct. I know that with the number of grants, particularly community development block grants, there are very strict conditions with respect to the kind of uses that that money can be used to fund.
Okay, so we don't.
We're kind of in a gray area right now with the federal government.
But there is a gray area on that, yeah. I know, you know, I've, I've done three major CDPGs for museums, and I, I know the hoops I had to jump through, and I know the regulations, and I know how they came out and inspected to make sure I did everything. I just, I know a lot of good money was spent on those sewers, and it really helped the neighborhoods. And I just, I just have this little bit of concern in the back of my head about the feds coming in and saying, oh, boy, we're in trouble here. Don't anybody tell them. Okay.
Well, I just, I, I don't know what was the sky, the size and scope of the, of the grant, or the, the funding amount. There is concept, but it, this, there wasn't a piece of sewer pipe that went strictly in front of Cottonwood and Edgemont that otherwise, this was more of a neighborhood-type, you know? So I, I, I don't, I tend to agree. I had problems with this when we first started doing cannabis, is, you know? It, suffice to say, I would imagine there would be, if, if somebody got their, you know, got something across, you know, something stuck in their craw on this, and they wanted to make a deal of it, they would prorate, there would be a proration of, of the grant because the, the neighborhood benefited, the, the health and safety of the, of the neighborhood. The grant funding, let me restate this, the grant funding was used in a proper manner to benefit the, the neighborhood from a health and safety standpoint. This one, one exception, the city, if somebody would do that, it would seem like there would be a reasonable case to be stayed. We will refund a proportionate share along that frontage. There would be a way to sort through that. It's a risk, but, you know.
Yeah, I know, we're just trying to straight, we're starting to straighten out the water in that neighborhood, and I get, I'm very, very concerned still about that whole neighborhood and the water situation. My next question would be, in the, in the growing area, on that second floor, does anybody have an idea of how many plants? Or, I know there's square footage, but this has to do with water usage, and I know growing marijuana, whatever we want to call it, cannabis. And I know growing marijuana, whatever we want to call it cannabis, requires a lot of water. And I actually have done some research on it for another project, for indoor or outdoor. It is a drain on a water system in the community. I know it's a small operation, but it still is a drain. And the indoor usage daily for each ten to twelve inch plant is three quarters of a gallon. And there's a lot of plants going in there. I don't know if they have a projection of how many plants are going to be grown there and what the daily water usage. I'm concerned, we're in the middle of a terrible drought. It's, it's sort of like the people growing the almond trees that are zapping the central valley of all the water. I know it's a small operation, but we are in a neighborhood that has always had water issues. So does anybody have an idea of what, how many plants can that hold?
So I won't address how many plants, but I will identify that we did receive a will serve letter from the water district for this project. So the water district is aware of the use and has identified that they will be able to serve it.
Okay. The water district can serve it, but is it an appropriate use during a drought? Okay, all right. So we don't know how many plants, but it's okay.
Again, again, as staff, I'm not able to, maybe the applicant will be able to.
I'm assuming the applicant get up and I think the applicant in selling the project would have say, we're gonna, you know, put a thousand plants in here, two thousand plants or I, you know, I don't know what strain. I'm not a cannabis expert. But I, I'm always concerned about water in a drought in projects that would perhaps, you know, put a bigger drain on our system in the time when we need to be conserving.
Chairperson and commissioners, I've seen a lot of these in, in other cities that I've worked in and most of the time we, they use like a drip system. And a lot of times they also have to recycle the water as well. So once, once the applicant comes up, maybe he can explain to you how the system they're going to use. I've seen a lot of them, they don't even use dirt for their, their pellets and the water goes directly to the, the roots. So there's different ways of doing it. So hopefully we can get the applicant to, to address that.
Thank you. Anyone else have any water issues? Okay, and the other questions? Commissioner Burgers?
I looked over the, I looked over the, the case real well. And I saw everything that you, the staff put together and what the developer or the applicant needs to get this project approved. I went by that place this morning when I was heading to Costco. I mean, you can't miss it if you go up Day Street, Cottonwood's right there, you make a left, boom, there goes Edgemont. So. This reminds me of the last project two weeks ago. When you got houses next to each other and you got cannabis being, going in the middle. I got the same problem today with that right now, same problem. I go up and down that neighborhood and I see that neighborhood cleaned up a lot, a lot from the old days of gang banging and drug selling. That neighborhood is clean. I went by there this morning, like I said, and you can see the streets and everything clean. Yeah, it's an old neighborhood. For me personally speaking, when I see two houses and neighborhoods like that, I have a problem with that type of business. And I love it because it's well built. I mean, it's just for me personally speaking, it's in the wrong location.
Commissioner Burgers, do you have a que, this is not deliberation here.
Why couldn't the staff find another location for her to build the, her business? When there's so many other places that we approved throughout the, the city.
So the city, so city staff does not identify a property for a developer to come in and develop. What we do is we take applications and proposals that comply and move them through the process to identify whether or not they meet our zoning standards and regulations. So the project that came before you, the applicant identified the site as complying with our zoning designation and has gone through our development code and has put forward a project that complies with our development standards. They have asked for a deviation on parking, but beyond that, they do comply with all of our development standards. So the city staff does not pick or choose a location for a site. It's always proposed by the applicant.
Anyone else? Any questions, anybody? I guess we'll move on. Would the applicant like to speak at this time?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Ajaen Orion. I am a counsel for green medication therapy, speaking on behalf of the applicant and its president, Vicky Chang. I can give some remarks if you'd like, or I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, we had some questions about the cannabis and the, the plans for how many plants would be and a little bit of the watering system inside and if it would be a drain and a waste. Did you have any, any further information?
Yes, I have a few things that I can mention. The first thing is, is that when we submitted this, these plans to planning, we included an environmental plan part of the section, which we addressed water usage. And there was a number of different commitments that we made in terms of drip irrigation and commitment to limiting our water use. I do want to say with regards to this application and how many plants we're going to grow, although I'm not in a position to give you a number, what I can say is that our motivation for applying for the, the cultivation permit was primarily for the purposes of R and D, to be able to work, to, you know, create different types of cannabis strains and to be able to test within our, in unison with our labs. So I don't anticipate that, you know, that it's going to be a fully blown out cultivation. I think that the maximum number of plants is probably going to be significantly less than the thirteen hundred square feet that we are, that, that's the building a lot. It's probably more like half that space, but that was what, what we were able to get out of the upstairs design. So we figured, you know, if we could have that extra building efficiency, that's why we wanted to get it.
Have you, as your engineer, identified what size meter, domestic meter is going to be for the site? Not the irrigate, outdoor irrigation or the fire sprinkler, but just the potable water use? I mean, is it three quarter inch, one inch, what size meter? Have you identified that yet?
I would, I have our engineering here and.
Go to the mic, sir.
I'll just come up to, you can take your mask off when you get to the mic.
Hi. At this point, we are not identify what size the pipes are going to be. We're going to defer that to the sprinkler engineer to do so.
I guess I'm more curious about what size, not for the fire sprinkler or the outdoor irrigation, but specifically the, the size of the water meter for the building that will be used in the interior of the building.
Right. I am more of a design engineer, so I am not.
That, that's fine, if you don't know.
Qualified to answer. Sorry.
Sir, can we also have you just state your name for the minutes, please?
Sorry?
Your name for the minutes, please?
My name is Hugh Van Lee.
Can I ask what we're, so if you weren't doing research with, with the cultivation, how many plants could you grow at the thirteen hundred square foot cultivation?
If that was the canopy size, I would say you're looking at somewhere between, you know, and there's a lot of range on how, how big plants can be grown and stuff. So take that with a grain of salt, maybe a hundred and fifty to two hundred plants.
And then what, and what's the water consumption per day per plant?
General rule of thumb is about a gallon per day, three quarters to a gallon per day.
So a hundred and fifty gallons a day?
Yes.
Okay. And then, and how many bathrooms are going to be in the facility?
I'd have to look at the plans again. How many, I think there's three different bathrooms and I don't, not sure how many toilets there are, but I would defer to.
It's three bathroom facilities, three toilets.
Just for general sakes, a, a normal, like a residential house, we would generally plan for, you know, three quarter inch meter would be, a, a three quarter inch meter would give you a continuous flow rate of somewhere to eighteen gallons a minute. So. Suffice to say, normal house wouldn't use, you know, over with outdoor sprinklers and everything, not more than like fifteen hundred gallons a day. So. Just, this is, this is a thirteen thousand square foot, thirteen thousand square foot. You know, if it was a seventy-five hundred square foot lot, you could almost have two houses on this piece of property. So to give you context on water consumption.
Can you discuss the odor, the odor control system or what are the, I don't, there wasn't a lot of detail. Do you have any idea or am I asking too many specific questions?
No, I can address that, although I'm not the engineer who's designed the plans. But I can speak that one of the requirements for having these facilities, both on a municipal level and on a state level, is to provide adequate plans to, to show that the odor coming from cannabis plants, cannabis materials is mitigated. We put in an odor mitigation plan back in our original submission to the city in two thousand and eighteen. I believe there was also a section that we submitted to planning in our most recent submission as well. The most common industry standards are reverse auspices, or I mean charcoal airflow filters and, and a comprehensive, you know, HVAC system that's put in place with those filters and, you know, maintenance on them, you know, usually every four to six weeks they're replaced. I am confident, just based on, you know, past projects that I've been participated on and the plan that we submitted, that, you know, if those filters and that HVAC system is put in place as intended, that there would be no detection to, of cannabis odor to the, to the human nose but either around the building or even in the, in non-cannabis areas of the building itself. I don't, I generally think that technology has caught up to the point where odor mitigation in cannabis buildings is no longer a serious concern. Or it's definitely a serious concern, it is no longer an insurmountable obstacle.
I mean, those houses are really next door, those. And I think we want to make sure that the neighbors would be taken care of. Sean, on that, how, how does the city regulate that? Do people go out and check on that or do you know? I'm just curious.
So I can actually give an example from today. One of our cannabis businesses is very close to opening. One of our conditions of approval, which is also on this project, is we require downdraft fans at the entrance to the buildings. So as part of the inspection that I actually completed on behalf of the planning division, that was one of the things that I did check for. And they were able to show me not only that they were in, but that they were operating. Also on the building plans, our building and safety division will also be checking them to make sure that they're functioning properly as well. So in terms of that specific item, there are two different entities that are checking that to make sure that it is implemented properly. So that, and that is a condition of approval that's been placed on this project specifically. We do it for all of our cannabis businesses.
You know how often you go by and re-inspect at any, you know, I don't know how long those filters and things last. Is there, I, I'm probably asking you way too many detailed questions.
So in terms of the filters and those, those types of things, those aren't things that I personally would check. You know, we verify, we, we would look to the applicant to provide a, they will provide the HVAC system, it'll be verified by building and safety. They will do the inspections of the system to make sure that it is properly installed at time of installation. In terms of ongoing verification by the city, we do not traditionally do that. What we would do is we would go out if there was a complaint and we would go verify the complaint and see what would need to be done to resolve the issue if there is one present.
And to add to that, and to add to that, we would have code enforcement go out there as well. And anytime they're in violation, we will cite them. And then if it keeps happening, we can always bring it back to the planning commission for revocation.
Is there any signage on the exterior that says if you smell odors, call this number? Or, or would it be, like if the neighbors were having issues, would they have to look up a phone number to who to call? Or you know how, like when you're doing new construction, it says if you're seeing too much dust, call this number? Is there something like that that goes on the exterior of these buildings for the neighbors? No? Okay.
Not at this stage, but it's something we could definitely add as a condition.
I did, I, we did put in the application that there would be a designated community liaison and their contact information would be placed outside the building in a legible and clear manner so that if there are any issues that need to be addressed, that a, and a citizen of the area would be able to clearly and intuitively, you know, have a point of contact.
So it would be posted on the building, so a person wouldn't have to like scurry and call five different departments?
That is correct.
Okay. That's, that's, that's a good idea. Okay.
Got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
You mentioned the word testing. Is it an in-house testing or is it an independent testing? Because you also mentioned that you're thinking of growing different type of plants. So is that in-house testing or is that going to be independent to say that this plant is the right plant to grow or to manufacture and to sell and distribute?
We will be doing in-house testing. However, testing for purity of the cannabis product has to be done according to like state licensing. And that is not one of the licenses that we are seeking at this time. So testing for purity and, you know, and efficacy of the cannabis will be done by a third party licensed testing. But with internal testing, because there is going to be a manufacturing facility there, part of a manufacturing business is, you know, product creation and being able to figure out what is exactly the right way to do something. That part of that process is trial and error and, you know, the scientific methods. So that's what we primarily mean by having the cannabis for R and D.
So. There are going to be three businesses independent to each other. Are we going to have different hours for each one or each one is going to operate under the same hours? Because we're talking about manufacturing, growing, and I believe growing requires more, more effort than the other two. So does that mean that growing is going to be twenty-four hours?
That's a good question. The primarily, the, the, when possible, the activities of these three businesses we want, we are planning to have taking place during business hours. However, cultivation is a twenty-four hour process. Nature doesn't stop at five o'clock. In the, in the capacity necessary to service plants, you know, in the time from, you know, off-business hours, we could expect there to be a limited amount of staff at the building. So I, I mean, twenty-four hours a day, there would, you know, and almost all, at almost any point, there would be at least, I'd say, one to two individuals in, inside the building. That's not as a rule or a policy, but as a matter of practicality, you know, the plants and, and the, the operations going on do need some supervision, even off-hours.
So that means the equipment would be on twenty-four hours? That means the fans will be running twenty-four hours and everything's going to be running twenty-four hours? Noise?
Yes, the, the equipment for, for cultivation, along with all the electrical equipment in the store, I mean, in, in the facility would be running. The, the primarily, the source of noise that would be created, that would come off-hours would be coming from, from the cultivation, that is correct. Part of our neighborhood compatibility plan that we submitted did address noise mitigation, the windows that we're using, the HVAC system that we're putting in. I do not have the decibel number for you, but we had a commitment that, you know, that we would not have a certain level of decibel outside the building that could be heard. And based on the building design and our anticipated use of, when we set up the cultivation, we can commit that, you know, outside of the building, that there will not be any, any background noise or any noise that could be identified with what's happening inside the building.
So that means that the structures of the lights around the building are beyond twenty-four seven?
The lights, not necessarily, because the lights in the cultivation, they go on according to a, a set time schedule. So, but to your point, during off-hours, lights would be on, electricity use would be used at the building. would be on, electricity use would be used at the building. We would, you know, as part of our energy, you know, use conservation plan, to the degree that we can run the power during off-hours at night, that was, that would be something that we would employ.
Because the structure of the building is up against the line, or the property line. So, you're, you're going to be up against the other property. So, is that light going to shine over the properties?
No, the light is not. Part of the building design addressed that specifically, that, you know, the, there is a, a wall and, and a, and a large window panel that, that I believe you can see out, but, but no light from the building is going to be coming out to, to, you know, we want, because of the operations and the sensitivity what's going in and there, we don't want people from the outside to be able to see in or to know what's going on in there.
But the building's two stories. Are they going to have any light above the first story, up on top?
There will be a light inside the, inside the building, but we, you know, the window design and stuff is not so that the, the light would not be shining out of the building.
I'm talking about the outside interior.
Oh, the outside interior. Okay.
Are we talking about lighting around there, around the building?
I believe there's some limited, like in the front, in the front entrance area and walkway, there is going to be lighting. I imagine we would keep some, some like night lights on around the landscaping, but you know, just like, like any business, we'd want to like, you know, bring down our profile in the evening time, especially since we're not serving the public. So.
Commissioner Burgess, if I may. In terms of the lighting and the off, and lighting outside of the facility, they will need to comply with our minimum, with our development standards for lighting, which does require that no light spill greater than half a foot candle occurs over any property line. So, they will ultimately have to design any onsite lighting to where they install cutoffs in order to prevent any light, to prevent light spill onto adjacent parcels. And they also have the option to run the lights at different levels beyond that during hours when the businesses closed. Or not, you know, generally there isn't anybody ac, you know, actively utilizing the parking lot area.
So, there's not, there's not going to be no alleyway driveway on the side, in the back of the building, on the side of the buildings? Like where you can drive from the, on the back side of the building to do deliveries, drop-offs?
So, there's only, there is only a singular parking lot on this site?
That's the front, only, right?
Well, that, that, that parking lot's actually located to the south of the building. It's on the south side of the building.
Okay.
Do you want us to pull up the map? Do you want to see the map? The, what you just asked? Anyone else? I do have a question. Do you know if the applicant has owned or operated any similar businesses in the past?
If you're asking if the applicant, Vicki Chang, has operated a licensed cannabis business prior to this one that we're applying for now, the answer is no. When we, Moreno Valley was actually one of the first, first cities in California, one of the first waves to offer this, this type of permit. So, you know, it's relatively new industries. So, however, you know, I can let, you know, Vicki is a graduate, an MBA from UCI, lots of experience within entrepreneurial world, within her family business, and she had the wherewithal to know what she doesn't know and to know that she needed a consulting help and she hired my firm. I have been in, working in the cannabis industry advising different projects for almost ten years now. I've been working with Vicki since two thousand eighteen on this and, you know, should we be fortunate enough to move forward, you know, it is our plan to continue to work together in a partnership manner, not just as counsel. So, I believe that she has a good team around her and her intuition in, in business, et cetera, is more than adequate to meet the needs and the demands of, of what we're trying to do. But to answer your question specifically, we do not, the applicant does not have prior cannabis experience, operating a cannabis business prior to today.
And, and would you just address the security issues on the exterior of the building? It's in a neighborhood where there are children walking by, and I know we're always concerned about our youth in this community. All right, Mr. Burgess is looking at me. Yeah, this always comes up at all of these. Can you just address how that's going to be handled? Any children coming up? Or, I know it's, this is only a plot plan and I understand that, but for a conditional use permit, we want to be comfortable in knowing that these security issues will be handled.
Certainly appreciate your concerns and this definitely not a problem. When the initial application for, to the city of Moreno Valley was submitted in, I believe, May of two thousand eighteen, one of the sections that I think was voted or weighed most heavily in, in terms of the points given, was the security section that we turned in. We turned in a comprehensive security plan, put together not by myself, but by a credentialed security professional. This individual in this case has a security license for a private organization as well as, I think, you know, is a retired military serviceman. In that security plan, it addresses, you know, comprehensively where the cameras will be for the building, surveillance, barriers to entry, windows, window possible, you know, a, a, all of these contingencies were addressed in that plan. So, what I can tell you is that security is probably the foremost concern with everything that we have submitted thus far. We do plan on having a, a security guard, you know, at the facility who has a credentialist, not just someone who's hired to, you know, walk around the building. The plan, I believe, is to have the, a, a security guard there twenty-four hours a day. I don't know if that's statutorily required, but that's a commitment that we are ready to make, you know, in order to keep, you know, both the building and the neighborhood safe. In terms, an important thing to mention is that, just in following state law, state regulations, all cannabis is tracked and traced and is going to be brought in through a designated loading area. So, you know, no cannabis products are just going to be coming through the front door in an unauthorized manner. It's always going to be going according to a security plan and procedure. So, and like, you know, a neighborhood, especially children, they would just not have any access to cannabis. This, this business would be running in a very low-profile way, and unless somebody specifically knew what the business was doing or did a Google search or something to that effect, that effect, they simply wouldn't know that it was cannabis. And that's, that's, that's our commitment that we would run it in that manner.
I have a question, man. And it was not addressed. Did you get an opportunity with your client to go out and do community outreach, to see what the public, your neighbors, because I got a list here of signatures that oppose your project? Okay? So, I want to know, did you go out to get some type of support for that kind of business in that little lot?
To, you know, I like to be straightforward and transparent with all my answers. So, the answer would be no. However, what we did do is we looked at the laws that the city of Moreno Valley passed, and within those laws that they passed, they said that the area where our property is located is eligible to apply for a permit, and it was based on that knowledge that we decided to, to submit. If it was said that we needed to get support from, in, in, either through a petition or other means prior to submission, we certainly would have done so, but that was not brought to our attention. And that's not something that I've done on previous cannabis, cannabis applications that I've worked on.
And I respect what the staff does, because everything what they do is by the law and, and they justify everything that they're doing. But there's also a human law that you have to understand also, because this is Edgemont. This is not Temecula, Marietta, Menifee. This is Edgemont. Edgemont has been struggling for years to be where they're at today, and they're afraid. They're afraid, because I'm not sure if you made it possible to go and look at the market across the street from the project that you're looking, hopefully to get approved tonight, and they got rails and bar wires around their business. Okay? So.
I would say that I certainly have been to that site on a number of occasions. We both have. One of our reasonings with picking that site, and I, I understand that, and I have great respect for different viewpoints here, but our, our viewpoint and, and our reasoning when selecting that site was that it looked like an area, an area and a neighborhood that is in transition. And, you know, the zoning, it seemed that it was like, you know, that it was open for the reasoning that, you know, new, new development was welcome. And I was with that reasoning. Perhaps we were mistaken at the time that we supplied, that we submitted, but it was with that reasoning that, you know, development in this area would be welcome, especially, you know, when we initially submitted our development, it actually, planning came back to us and said, you know, we can't just put a warehouse here. We got to put in a nice building that's going to really, you know, take, take the neighborhood and improve the character of the neighborhood. So, we actually went through another round with our engineering team to try to come up with a plan and a building that meets that type of aesthetic. And, and this is a personal opinion, it's not a legal opinion, but I believe that our plan, our building, would, you know, enhance the neighborhood aesthetics greatly if it was, if it was, if it was built there. It's a, it's a, it's a modern design and it's not just a warehouse with an industrial feel. It doesn't look like, you know, like, like something you'd see in, in, right next to a port or something like that. It's a, it's a high-quality office building. You know, it looks not much different from than what, like a surgical center or another med spa might look like. I mean, it's a, you know, it's going to be a modern building, giving, you know, with modern jobs that pay, you know, a far higher than average, far higher than a living wage. These are going to be technical jobs for cannabis manufacturing that will, you know, require people with a background in engineering and chemistry, college graduates. We'd like to be in a position that we can offer technical training to, you know, to the universities and community colleges, so that, you know, other people can get a foothold, not just in the cannabis industry, but in the, the science and the technology that cannabis manufacturing does. It applies across a wide variety of fields.
Anyone else? Well, then I think if there are no other questions, we might call, we will call you probably back up after public comments.
Thank you. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. We're going to now open the public testimony section. The clerk will call upon each person who has requested to speak. Each member of the public wishing to speak will have a maximum of three minutes on the agenda item. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two.
Okay, we can call the first one?
Jerry Mercado.
Hi, my name is Jerry Mercado. I'm a resident of District One and I live in a development adjacent to the proposed marijuana grow house. I'm concerned about the location of this project and the submitted entitlement package before you. The location is the wrong place for this project. This is one of the most blighted intersections in the city of Moreno Valley. The mere fact that the convenience store across the street is fenced and has barbed wire for security should give you an indication of the underlying issues. This area does not have the infrastructure. North on Edgemont Street, it has no curbs or gutter and the street is pothole ridden. This entitlement package is conceptual at best, and there are many items not addressed and need to be considered. I'll bring up the parking issue because you guys touched upon it. This building has, is, has a CMU block, uh, wall construction on the second floor. It spans fifty-four feet. You're going to need additional columns and they're going to impede upon that parking lot. So, you're going to lose more parking stalls. Second, that trash enclosure, once it goes to plan check, it doesn't meet the, the trash enclosure requirements. It'll be five feet deeper and guess what? You'll reduce the parking spaces even further. The items I want to touch upon are the items of odor, which is a major issue. The city did not provide in the package any information about what kind of systems they were going to use, what kind of scrubbers, what, he said that they're going to use carbon filters. That's fine, but I'd like to see it in the package. It, it doesn't matter. Once you approve it, they can do whatever they want during plan check. The other item is noise. You know, they talked about, in the conditions of approval, it says that it has, it has to be, uh, the, the noise is, this place is only going to operate from six AM to ten PM. But he had, he, by admission, said it's a twenty-four-hour facility. That's what the residents are going to hear every day, during the day, during the night. And the city has done nothing or provided anything in the package to show how that's going to be mitigated. Prop sixty-four was passed in an effort to regulate marijuana and to provide it safely and make it accessible to people, so they don't have to buy it in the black market. In the same manner, the city of Moreno Valley wants to allow this type of business and needs, and it needs to regulate development as well and provide design guidelines for this area, good neighbor policies for the people that live in this area, protect the residents that are going to live adjacent to these commercial and industrial facilities. Edgemont isn't going to be bulldozed overnight. It take, it's going to take a long time. Ten, twenty, thirty years, who knows?
Jerry, I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Thanks so much. Thank you for listening to me.
May we have the next speaker, please?
Arthur Cobb.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for having me up here. I am Arthur Cobb. I am an associate pastor of Liberty Baptist Church, which is located at one-three-six-three-zero Edgemont Street. We have been there as a church for a number of years. It was First Baptist Edgemont and it's now Liberty Church. My senior pastor, who is going to be here tonight, Pastor Mark Beagle, is recovering from some medical treatment that he had this afternoon, so he couldn't be here. But he planted that church back in about two thousand six, and we've been there since, and we know the people. And my concern isn't about the building. My concern isn't about where it's placed and various things, which I do have a lot of input on as far as safety is concerned in that area. We do have motion sensor lights on our facility. It's not uncommon to have two or three people that we have to chase off of the property in the morning when we get there, that have been sleeping in the dark in the back. That's a common occurrence in that area. Edgemont Street is a thorough fair of walking traffic and that walking traffic, a lot of that walking traffic are, are young men and some women that are on drugs. They're stoned. And they come in and hide in our facility and use our property to be able to accommodate their addiction. And we usually have to clean up, weekly, we'll be cleaning up paraphernalia that's been left behind by those that are walking at night, up and down that street. So, there is a problem with drugs in that area. We are very familiar with the community. We open up, for example, this October thirty-first, we'll have a trunk or treat again, and we'll have somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty children from the neighborhood come into our facility and have a safe place to get candy. And it's, it's secured. But that's just in the immediate neighborhood. There's at least a hundred and fifty children. Our concern is that we have in an environment that, that we are allowing as a city to come into an area that are family, these are homes that are surrounding, with the exception of the market and that little, a lot that's next to the market. The rest of the buildings that are in that area are homes and they're, you're putting a marijuana, and I wasn't sure if distribution was going to be limited to truck distribution, or if sometime in the future, are we going to be seeing foot traffic coming up there? And if we don't have gates and sufficient barriers around the property, you're going to have people sleep- And if we don't have gates and sufficient barriers around the property, you're gonna have people sleeping in that property. Uh, we also have dealt for a number of years with, um, graffiti. And that's another issue in the area.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Are there any additional speakers?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. Um, at this time, would the applicant like to provide any additional, are you coming up to speak?
Madam Chair, um, we have one last speaker, Tim Coleman.
Uh, my name is Tim Coleman and I live one block from this proposed facility. Uh, you, you probably don't know me, but I worked for the ERF Moreno Valley for thirteen years. Got my name out there as volunteer of the year and, uh, and I see the kids coming by, going to school, one block from this place. I see the kids going to church half a block from this place and, and I'm concerned. The counselor said that they're gonna keep it secret, but there's a big sign that says, oh, we're gonna grow marijuana here. So the kids are knowing and the kids that use are gonna know and they're gonna pass the word around. My, uh, second concern is, uh, security guard, uh, you need to be eighteen years old and you have to have eight hours of training. And it costs a hundred and ninety-five dollars. If you want a gun, it's another hundred. And that's the security we may have in this neighborhood. I've gone by dispensaries and I understand they're not dispensing, but they've got a high, high volume, popular drug. It, uh, may be sort of legal now, but there are some people that don't wanna pay for it. They're wanting to take it by force and I don't want gunplay in my neighborhood. I just don't. I thank you for giving me time. I'm gonna use about half what you gave me. And, uh, keep in mind that the city's gonna get permits and other things. They'll, they'll benefit from this, but the cost is you're telling Edgemont, telling my neighborhood that drugs are a good idea. Recreational drugs are a great thing to, to have in our neighborhood and it sends a message to the whole city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, would the, um, applicant like to make any final statements? Or provide any additional information?
Uh, yes, I'll just make a couple of quick statements. If, I, I appreciate that. At first, I just wanted to thank, uh, the community for, uh, get, sharing their concerns. Um, you know, when we came to Moreno Valley, when we decided to submit an application, uh, back in twenty eighteen, one of the reasons why we wanted to work in the city and still definitely do is because there is a strong sense of community here. Um, you know, that, that, you know, not anything just goes here and that I felt it with the people I've worked with and a number of people who've lived here their whole life. So I definitely, it is our sincere desire to be working as a partner with the, with Moreno Valley rather than, you know, coming in as a, you know, an outside force and going against the grain. You know, I really do believe that the, the concerns of the public have been and will be addressed in the plan that we have submitted. I have been working in cannabis for almost a decade now. I've been around seeing some of the earliest cities adopt, uh, adopt, you know, a permit structure and eventually, you know, bring in these type of businesses. And from the very beginning, concerns about, you know, drug use, you know, being, you know, unregulated, you know, negative effects to the, the community. These are always have been concerns and they're very valid concerns. What I can say is that when I've seen, you know, marijuana businesses, particularly non-retail businesses brought in to, uh, to communities, that the effect, if anything, has been overwhelmingly positive. We're bringing in new infrastructure, newer, modern buildings. We are building in jobs that are going to pay. Uh, we've made a commitment to hire, um, you know, at least, I think, two-thirds of our, uh, of our employees within, from the local labor pool. We've made commitments to, you know, to, to supply our business with its ongoing needs through local vendors. So if all things are taken into consideration, I think great, great steps and measures have been taken to mitigate the negative effects that are coming from cannabis. And then, you know, and then when it's all said and done, that it's a net positive for the community. I truly believe that. The concerns are a hundred percent valid. I think they mostly are going to have to deal with retail cannabis. So even a licensed retail cannabis is going to have hundreds of individuals or at least hundred plus individuals in a day coming in and out of the store to buy cannabis. And then, you know, there's issues about consumption, issues about loitering. These, um, we have the same interests as the city that we do not want any of that at our facility. Um, that's not good for what we're trying to get done. That's not good for the community at large. So our interests and our desires are aligned with those matters, um, with trying to, um, and the last thing I'd say is that, you know, we want to work with the community and we believe that the, you know, that if this business is allowed to prosper here, we're committed to contributing and giving back to Moreno Valley through a community development agreement. Um, you know, you, it's very common in other municipalities to work out some sort of agreement that, you know, as this benef- uh, business grows and, uh, develops, um, that those benefits are shared with the community at large and we intend to do that as well. So I, unless you have any specific questions that I can address for you, I'd be happy to try and do that. That's, I'm gonna go ahead and conclude and say thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're gonna close the, um, public hearing. We're gonna move on into deliberations, but the staff, do we have any more questions of staff before we deliberate? I hear nothing rattling, so, um, okay, go ahead.
You mentioned, um, you plan on having a, you'll be hiring locally from a local hiring pool and also possibly having a community workforce agreement. Is that correct? Did I hear that correct?
Um, a community development agreement. Um, yeah, that's usually between the business and the municipality on how we can do, you know, a commitment to revenue sharing or community contributions, et cetera. Um, I have, definitely have some proposals that I'd be happy to get into at the appropriate time.
And would that be in agreement for the construction of the building as well, for hiring local hire?
Absolutely. Um, uh, we are in, you know, we don't like to get ahead of ourselves or assume anything, but if we, uh, move forward, you know, we have every intention to hire a Moreno Valley-based, uh, construction firm for the job.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, at that time then, we're going to move into deliberations. Um, who would like to start? Okay.
I could start. I, I didn't ask a lot of questions upfront. I know there was, um, my fellow planning commissioners had some great questions, so I was, I was observing, I was listening and, um, a lot of great questions and concerns. Um, I might be the youngest one on this panel. Not by a lot, but, um, I have a young child, eleven years old and, uh, I talked to him about this and he clearly understands about, um, you know, cannabis and, um, he doesn't look at it any different now. He understands that people are gonna do that. Any different now than, than I did when I, it was, uh, alcohol, growing up. It's just something that's legal and there's some people are gonna do that and others. So I don't necessarily agree with some of the comments stating that children look at this as drugs anymore. Young children are gonna grow up the way we did all, um, being around liquor stores. Matter of fact, I have more of a problem with liquor stores and alcohol being, um, popping up everywhere. I have a big concern with that because the statistics show that, uh, and I'm sure the, you know, our police department would agree that, drunk driving is a major issue throughout, um, you know, California. We have people that are killed on a regular basis and statistics show that more people die from drunk driving than they do from cannabis, uh, accidents. That's one thing. Um, it was mentioned that there will be no retail out of this building. So this is a building like any other building. I look at it. I look at it like, uh, uh, an area that's underdeveloped, that needs, uh, uh, something nice to look at. I think this could be a trend for other businesses to wanna grow. I have visited Colorado, actually. I've spent some time out there for my work and I've seen their buildings. It's very similar to this. And, um, and I've also seen that other bill, other, uh, businesses have grown because of this, have actually cleaned up areas. We are a big city now. This is, we're not Sunny Mead. We're not small Moreno Valley and we're big Moreno Valley and we're growing every day, so, um, I, I think that from what I've heard from the developer and, uh, I, I did hear the community's concern, but I have a young child and I know the way he thinks about this and, and the fact that there is, I, I would have concerns if it was, uh, if there were, uh, dispensing, but, um, but there isn't and it's gonna be a, a good paying job and there's gonna be, it's gonna be a building like other. As far as security, well, that's something you're gonna have to work with, you know, the neighborhood you're going into, but where do we start? Where do we start? If we don't put something like this now to start getting rid of that, uh, the drug addicts on the street or, or business that's gonna protect themselves, um, nothing's ever gonna change in that neighborhood. So that was my final comment. Thank you.
Thank you, man. I read the project real well. I've been in the neighborhood four times in the last week to look at it real well, all the way down to each corner. And the staff put a great report. I mean, it's great. I mean, you, there's some hard rules that you have to abide by if it gets approved tonight. It's great. But you failed to communicate with the locals. That was important 'cause you probably would have picked another spot. Because you also have to listen to the human law of the land too. I know that Moreno Valley is growing and I have approved a lot of cannabis. But I have approved them on the avenues where you can see them, not in, in the middle of two buildings that I call houses. See? That's where my problem is at. Edgemont, two houses. A neighborhood that's recovering from gangs and drugs. Yes, the pastors know the needs of the people, but we hear the stories in the news for years that Edgemont was having trouble. I think when you clean up the sewage and put a new paving down, it changes the face of a neighborhood. But it doesn't give a right to anyone to abuse the property then build something that doesn't fit in the neighborhood either. I love your project. Really, I do. I really love your project, but I wish it was more open on the avenue, like many of them already got approved on Sunny Mead Boulevard. It's out there on that vacant lot out there that can also get be put there too. It's great land. I mean, I wish the best. I don't know what's gonna happen tonight. I know what I'm gonna do. Cause I believe also in the human law, that cannabis cannot prevail over human law either. The staff did everything right by law. But you always, you also gotta fit in the human law. And people do have a right not to see something again, because I believe that a lot of people in Edgemont got to see their sons and daughters got hooked on drugs and some of them are in jail or dead today. I know it, cause I lived in that neighborhood myself in New York City. Hey, when they put a methadone clinic in the middle of the block, you know what came from all over the place? Junkies. After they got their methadone and they left, and you know where they went? To the park in my neighborhood to nod out. Now, you don't hear those words anymore, but this project reminds me of putting something where it don't belong, cause it could hurt the neighborhood. I don't know what's gonna happen tonight. You know, but I know how I feel for those parents that lost their sons and daughters to drugs. But I like what you're doing. I like everything because by your, um, growing, distributing and all that, we watch you do it right. So you're gonna do it right. I know you're gonna do it right because the law of the city and the federal state and the county is gonna protect us. I know that you're gonna do it right. It's just the wrong location for it. You need to be more in an open space so you'll have less problems. And the noise and whatever else happens will be out more in an open space, not in a neighborhood stuck between two houses. That's my personal opinion. That's what I've learned by reading this case and going to the neighborhood over and over. Okay, that's just my personal opinion.
Who would like to go next? Did you, someone clicked in?
We'll go from the ends and work to the end.
Okay.
Chairperson Corzett likes to hold, hold the end, bring it up to back. So, um, the cannabis, uh, stuff is, comes up and I, I personally have reservations about the whole cannabis stuff. Uh, I, I think I, when we first, when we first got the first, uh, commission reports, they would say, yeah, and they probably, I can't remember reading it in, but you know, it says, it's legal in California, but we still federally, it's not considered legal, you know, it's not like, well, wait a minute, you know, but I thought we're a part of the United States and anyhow, but that's a whole nother conversation for a different audience, I suppose. So, but suffice to say, California is, is proceeding on with these. The city of Moreno Valley has its council, has city council has adopted ordinance that allows these and so it comes down to then these things with the CUP for the entitlements is, are these fit within all the rules that, that is prescribed per city ordinance that these fit? So I think that it does. It, it'd be by law, like, uh, Commissioner Burgara says, you know, I think staff's done a good job here. I, I, I personally am in favor of this. Uh, I will, I, I'm gonna be voting yes on this one. Not because I'm a big advocate of the cannabis business, but what, what push, what draws me to this is here you have a, have a business that this could be, for instance, a, a building similar to going to the optometrist or you go to a, uh, just a regular building that is, it's just a inconspicuous building because that's all it is. There is not a, it's not a storefront. It's not people coming in and out all the time. This is just a, a place where people would go to work every day. So it's just doing a different operation that maybe we're not as familiar with. So I think the Edgemont area, there are significant constraints in that area that, that, that plagues that, that, uh, that area. Uh, one is the, uh, actual mutual water company that it needs, it, it needs to figure out a way to get in the absence, i- if, if, if there was, if there was water, we would not be having issues in, in Edgemont. That, that property would, would go like hot potatoes. It is also constrained by the, by the, uh, the airstrip with, uh, you know, a crash zone there. So there, there are limitations on that. Long story short is, is this project is gonna be on a corner that at least one quarter of the, of this intersection is not gonna be blighted. It's gonna have curb. It's gonna have, uh, an improvement. It's gonna have landscaping. It's gonna have a business where people are gonna go to work, which is a positive for this neighborhood. We have ta- talked as a commission around and around and around about the virtues of having uh, security. We're gonna have enhanced, we're gonna have, uh, the, uh, applicant has said they're gonna have a, a guard here twenty-four seven. There will be enhanced lighting, which will be hooded, so it won't impact the neighbor. I don't see any reason why this shouldn't go. So, uh, I, that's, that's my two cents on that.
There's been a lot of, uh, issues brought up. There's been a lot of, uh, topic. Um, gosh, how can I say? Back in nineteen seventy-five, seventy-four, seventy-five, I lived in that neighborhood. Used to walk to school every single day, back and forth to Moreno Valley High School. I used to work at that, which is now the Big Six, but back then it was a Circle K. So I worked in that store. I remember that. And, and people forget that alcohol is also a drug. And one of the big things is people coming into that store and, uh, doing beer runs and running out or robbing the store. And I was there and I was one of those persons that did it. Matter of fact, a lot of people probably don't remember this, directly across from that store, um, to the east was a mechanic shop. Bill, Bill used to work there. And his son took over the shop after the two-story building, his house. And, uh, ran a mechanic shop out of there for years. He was my mechanic for many, many, many years. He was my mechanic for many, many, many years. So not just the, the Circle K there, mechanic shop was there. Now it's probably just a restaurant. At the Raceway and the decibel level from the Raceway was tremendous. We would hear that thing for miles around and not nearly anything close to the, the comparisons to, to this business are going to be in there. Cars and motorcycles and everything and you can hear that thing everywhere. And we lived in that neighborhood. I think that sometimes we get sensitive when we start talking about cannabis and all the connotations that go along with cannabis. I do remember this, walking down that, that, that neighborhood on a daily basis and going to that store and, and I just, I, I remember I used to think, man, I, I wanted our neighborhood to be normal. I wanted sidewalks, we used to walk in the dirt. There weren't sidewalks there. I go out to the military and come back and my mom still lives in that neighborhood and go, wow, there's actually sidewalks going up and down Day Street. The change, I said, this is great, it's starting to change. I remember when we used to all try to go to work at the, what was that? Robinson's Ready Mix, right down the street. We used to try to go to Robinson's Ready Mix. We used to try to work at the, the red building, the Red Barn, the auction building, right down the street. Yeah, remember that. We used to go to the Helping Hand, right there on the old 395 to get milk and cheese and, and bread and stuff like that. So the area is starting to grow, it's starting to change and, and it's, it's a good thing. It's, it's absolutely a good thing. I just, I just, I, I agree with the commissioner that people have to remember that alcohol is also a drug and there is a store right there, right across the street that sells alcohol. And it is a drug, just like cannabis. However, when our cannabis regulations, they have to have, especially when you're talking about sales, there are so many more regulations than putting up a liquor store. From man traps to order control to security guards, and if we put a liquor store there, we wouldn't have any of that stuff. We put the liquor store in, it'd go up and guess what? It'd be up to that owner to put up barbed wire and fences so they wouldn't get robbed all the time. We have to kind of get past the connotations that we have associated through the press and what we feel about cannabis. It's a building. When you look at what could go in a business park, there are so many other things that can go there and the list goes on and on and on and on and on of so many things that can go there. I think that it's, our, our, our planning has done an excellent job. The building looks beautiful and I, I do have a little personal feel in that, that area. I want to see that area grow and I wanted to see it change and I think the project looks excellent. I think it does. So I, I like the project. I, I plan on voting for the project.
My turn? Okay. One of the reasons I asked Sean ahead of time to list the projects that we had approved in that area was that there were some beautiful projects that really fit the lots, that fit the neighborhood with the heights and everything else. There wasn't a lot of question about the accessibility and how it pertained to the lot. Going out to the site and seeing it and walking it and, and being part of it and looking at the neighborhood, I feel like, and I know it's all according to code, but I feel like this building has been dropped down into a lot that is so small that those neighbors are, and I know, I know the zoning, the neighbors are going to look up and see a two-story building where there are no others. The others fit the areas they were in, this one to me does not. Now, I love the design, you know, I love contemporary architecture and I think it's beautifully designed. I have so many red flags on this one. I cannot agree with the reduction of the parking spaces. It seems like every time we get a project here, we're reducing parking spaces. And this one, to me, is claustrophobic and if those businesses should change, it's going to be a fiasco. The parking spaces are a huge red flag. The, the usage of water in a period of drought, to me, knowing you're going to be putting a business into an area that's had water issues, but also are, are we being responsible people at this time and point in you, putting a business in that's going to zap more water when we are going to be, next year, we're going to be in a really terrible problem down here? I have problem with the water. I, I, I thought maybe the two neighbors would show up tonight, but their problem, we, we received a list of 50-something names of people on a petition that were against the project. And I have to agree with Commissioner Brugeras. I really felt that there maybe should have been more outreach to that neighborhood because this is so different. It, it doesn't fit where it's going and it's big and it's dark, but it's beautifully designed. I would not question that. You know, I, we talk about Edgemont and we talk about improving Edgemont, but I think we need to be more careful in the way we improve it. And I don't think by forcing things into an area that has been so underserved in the past and an area where there are lots of children and it doesn't fit the lot and it's just, it's too much for me. I, I can't imagine that building looking good on that size of lot, even though it's beautifully designed. I just, I want to be more respectful of that neighborhood and when we put things in that neighborhood, it, it should be given the same respect that other neighborhoods do in our city. And I sometimes feel that we just overlook that. And so there are so many red flags in my book on this one that I'm not going to vote for it, even though the design is beautiful and the city did a good job on the plan. The parking, the, the whole, the whole encapsulation, too, too many, too, too many issues for me. Okay. Anyone else? Well, if we don't have anything else, we can call for the vote. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I, I'll take a stab at the motion. I'd like to recommend that the Planning Commission approve Resolution Number 2021-36, approve Resolution Number 2021-37, approve Resolution 2021-38, and approve Resolution 2021-39.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's call for the vote. Okay, we have. No, we don't have an abstained.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Something is weird.
It shows that you're away, do you?
I'm here.
I know.
I pushed it. I vote no.
No? Okay, so I'll mark that for the record.
Yes, please do. I see it shows up, oh, that shows no vote, okay. Yeah, we had issues last time, but no, for the record, I will vote no to make life easy for us. So the motion is carried three to two. Would the staff like to do a wrap-up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The action taken by the Planning Commission this evening is an appealable action. Any interested party that would like to file an appeal may do so within 10 days of this action. If an appeal is filed, it must be in writing and directed to the Community Development Director stating the specific reasons for the appeal, along with the appeal filing fee of $750. If any appeal is received, it will be agendized for a public hearing before the City Council within 30 days.
Thank you. We have no items for discussion under other commission business. Do we have any staff comments at this time?
Yes, Chairperson and Plan Commissioners, if you haven't noticed, we do have a new Planning Manager, Planning Official, and that's Sean Keller. He is taking Patty Nevens' place, so we congratulate him on that new position.
Thank you, thank you, Sean. Are there any other Planning Commissioner comments?
I have one, or a couple. I believe that the staff has an obligation to the city of Moreno Valley to inform the community of what's really going in there besides sending flyers within 600 feet. I, I believe that the applicants have an obligation to the neighborhood also, because for many of us that worked and lived in the city of Moreno Valley knows a little bit about Edgemont, it is no secret about Edgemont. I'm happy for the developer or the applicant because she's going to have tough rules. I mean, I really do like the project, I do like what the staff's done. I just don't like the location where they're going to put it. But I believe that the staff has an obligation to have future applicants to do outreaches because there's also a human law. We still live in America. And America gives you the right to know things. There's a lot of people that moved into these areas that don't know the law or the changes that happened in 2006 and passed, okay? They need to know when these lots are available for purchase. There should be reach, outreaches out there so everybody can be in the same page. Because there are developers, there are applicants that can persuade residents that it will be a good project. I've seen that done, I've been here long enough to see it and I've been involved in them myself. It can be done. Please do not allow applicants to take advantage of us, the residents, because that's not fair to us either, even if we're growing as big as we are. We're still human beings, we still have feelings about things that had happened to us in the past, that we may not have it, like myself, I would not want a, a clinic in the middle of my neighborhood that brings junkies to get their methadone. Find a corner, an open space that we all can see it a lot better than in the middle of the neighborhood. That's all I'm asking, that maybe in the future, that we have applicants reach out at least a couple of times to understand what's in the neighborhood and how people feel, because I believe they can persuade them with good things that will come, just like everyone mentioned, new streets, new lights, new plants, new everything. Can happen, I've seen it done. So that's just my personal comment and I hope it does come to pass in the future.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to adjourn us to the next Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, October 28th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We are now officially adjourned at 8:33. Thank you. 8:43, yeah, okay. Adjourned.